Okay, Joe, we're ready. Good evening, everyone. At seven o'clock on the nose, I will open tonight's Lunenburg Select Board meeting of Tuesday, April 12th, 2022, and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this evening. Let's do all the protocol first. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live, on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting has concluded. The following information is also provided for members that would like to participate in tonight's meeting remotely. If you would like to do so, and you have a computer, a tablet, or a smartphone, and you have the Zoom app, you can do so by entering the webinar ID 9091740347. If you'd like to participate and don't have any of those smart devices but have access to a phone, you can dial 888-475-4499. And once again, the webinar ID is 9091740347. The posted agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. So do I have any public comment from the board this evening?
None.
Nope, none.
And none from me. Any public comment from the public? Seeing none. Any announcements? Madam Town Manager, are there any announcements?
No announcements.
The only announcement I'll make is from now till when it actually happens, that town meeting is on Saturday, May 7th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. at the Lunenburg Middle School High School Auditorium. Say, we're going to take something out of water. We have two ratifications. Let's take the first one, is the ratification of the town manager's appointment of a new police sergeant, John Morial. So I would, I'll ask you to introduce it, Madam Town Manager, as the Chief makes his way to the podium.
The Chief has a prepared letter that he's going to read to the board about the process and the request to appoint Officer Morialy to as police sergeant.
Chief, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. I would like to thank the board tonight again for allowing me to present an outstanding candidate for the position of Sergeant. I'll read from a letter that I prepared. I'll have a few things to say also at the end. As you're aware, we had a vacancy in the sergeant's position. We had a person that had to give up the position. It's been a while since we've been able to backfill that position and come up with candidates just because of our, we are short-staffed, and I wanted to make sure we are fully staffed before we're able to move forward with this. We posted a position for 30 days according to the CBA with the IBPO Local 353, and on Wednesday, April 6th, we conducted interviews. The interviews were from an outside panel that included the police chief from Groton, Michael Luth, who was a former lieutenant here in Lunenburg, Chief Richard Burrows from Acton Police Department, and our town manager, who sat in on the interviews. The process was for three candidates that we had interviewed. At the end of the, the questions were asked of the candidates and were prepared by myself and the lieutenant. Their response was based on a scale of a 1 to 5, based on their responses to the questions that they were asked. Upon the conclusion of the panel interviews, the lieutenant and myself met with the panel to discuss the results. We are informed that all three candidates did well. One of the comments that was said to me, which really stuck with me, that we couldn't go wrong with any of them. And to me, that shows that we have some strong candidates, strong officers within our police department. One of the strongest candidates that was identified, and he came out as the top candidate, was Officer Morialy. Officer Morialy was described as well-spoken, knowledgeable, and compassionate, to give a few examples. It was also stated that he has a good working knowledge of the department's policies and procedures. Officer Morialy was, was a lifelong resident of Lunenburg until he recently bought a house in Ashby. Obviously, you can afford it out there. He's a graduate of Lunenburg High School. He holds a bachelor's degree of science and criminal justice from UMass Lowell. He completed the Reserve Intimitate Academy in 2014, and he was hired as a Lunenburg Reserve officer in July of that year. In 2017, he was hired as a full-time officer here in Lunenburg and attended the Municipal Police Training Academy, graduating in 2018 with the 8th ROC from the Redding Recruit Academy. Officer Morialy has completed several instructor-level courses and is currently one of the department's less-than-lethal TASER instructor, as well as a firearms instructor. As well as being a use-of-force application instructor, he is also currently one of the department's field training officers, as well as the department's Criminal Justice Information System representative. As the department was working towards certification for accreditation, which has been a long process, I named Officer Morialy to his chagrin, the department's accreditation manager. Knowing that he has outstanding skills with computers and how to format different things and trying to get this process going, I knew I had somebody I could count on. He took, took on the role. He was an integral part of it, and we are near completion, and we are in the process of being certified, hopefully by the end of July. Without his tireless work, we wouldn't be in this position right now, so I applaud him for that. That's one of the several accomplishments that he has, he has had. Along with his accomplishments, Officer Morialy often volunteers his time with various community events such as Boys and Girls Club, Are You Smarter Than a Sixth Grader? As we found out, we were not. We suffered a very big defeat that night, and sorry to say, it was tough to watch. I'm just kidding. Other organizations that he's involved with is the Massachusetts Police of Chiefs, Jimmy Funwalk. Annually, he assists with fundraising efforts at Family Park. He's also responsible for setting up all the Jimmy Fund cans that you see at the local stores around. Collects them, turns them into the Massachusetts Police. In a relatively short period of time with the department, Officer Morialy has made the most of his opportunities given to him. Officer Morialy's commitment to the department and the community is beyond reproach, which I can personally attest to, having supervised him, trained him, and worked with him since Officer Morialy possesses the leadership skills that we look for in our supervisors. I believe Officer Morialy recognizes the strengths of others, knows how to address deficiencies in a positive manner using teachable moments. Officer Morialy's compassion and understanding will help him grow and navigate the inherent challenges that come, that comes with a sergeant's role. It is also my belief that he has the skills to develop younger officers into leadership roles throughout their careers. Words on a paper, you know, they mean a lot, but when I'm up here speaking about him, it really does remind me of what a great department we have, and he's just a shining example of what, what we're producing here in Lunenburg. I've said this before, and again, you've heard me say this a million times, that we have the best department in the state, and he's a shining example of it. I presented two officers or three officers for accommodations the last time I was up here, and it just continues to grow, and that's what we're seeing. I'm very proud of John. John is somebody that I've watched grow and develop in this police department, and I hope he continues to grow and bring that leadership qualities to him. So with that being said, and everything that I've said about him and gave him the shining review, I present to you Officer John Morialy.
Mike is yours.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having me again, and thanks for all my friends and family for coming out. As the Chief said, this is my third time in front of the board. First as a part-time, then a full-time officer, and now as a sergeant. I'm always grateful for the opportunity that I've been given. I'm very excited to get started on this next part of the journey and continue working with the town and the citizens, and I'm just very excited, and thanks, thanks again for having me.
Thank you. And just because your third time before us, I think you'll, you'll pass better than 53 to 47, I think. So, I want to commend, I want to commend the Chief. We always say this, I agree with you that it's the best department, and one of the, one of the litmus tests that I use is how well they promote from within and how well they backfill the new positions and nurture people for higher positions. I mean, the Chief himself came up through the ranks here, and, and the Chief before him, the same, and everybody, you know, the sergeants here all came from, you know, within, and that really means a lot to the department, it means a lot to me, and I know it means a lot to the community here, which I think as a whole overwhelmingly really has a great respect and feeling for the Lunenburg Police Department. So, thank you all for that. Any questions for Mr. Morialy?
I have no questions, but I just want to read, add to what you said, Tom, that the culture of positivity this department has and the way the officers support each other, it really is, it's a, it's a testament to what you've built, and as a town, we're lucky to have it.
Anybody else?
I have no questions, but I just want to thank you for serving.
Thank you.
So I think you know this is a near and dear to me.
Yes.
You know, anything involving our police department certainly is on my radar. And, you know, I think, first, I have to give some credit to Chief Gammel over here in acknowledging that, you know, his hires, I think, have been really good, and, and I think he's continued all the things that were going well with, with Chief Marino, and I think he's taken a lot of that and really helped it flourish. And I agree with what Mr. Alonsel said, you know, having, being a retired military police officer, you know, I think that, um, there are measures. You can always tell if a department is working effectively and efficiently, and it's by the leaders. You know, Sergeant Tossi, future Chief Tossi over here, is, I know he's, I know he's about as hard as they come.
Yeah.
Right? And so you need, and I'm probably of the same ilk as Mr. Tossi, but I think that you need to have, what makes a department successful is that there has to be people like us, people like, like Sergeant Tossi over here, and there needs to be another side of that, right? Where I'm not saying that Mr. Tossi isn't compassionate and involved, because he certainly is, but you need to have a sergeant corps that can focus on different areas, that you can have some people that's like, hey, you got to achieve, you just got to achieve. And then you have the other people who are more community-focused and who are really kind of a face. You know, if I'm at a foxhole, I'm telling you, Sergeant Tossi has my back.
Yeah.
But I really think, I've had interactions with you, you know, you've been very professional.
Yes, sir.
You're a member of a, of a great, you know, I would say fraternity, but I know that that's not just fraternity, but you're a member of a great organization, you know that. You know, we don't have high turnover here in Lunenburg because it's a good department. You know, people quit, not because their job sucks, but because their boss usually sucks.
Right.
And, and you have a good corps here, so I have a lot of respect for what you guys do, I have a lot of respect for you.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate you stepping up and deciding that this is a community you want to grow in for your career, that you're looking to move up these ranks, and it's unfortunate you chose to buy a house in Ashby, but we won't hold that against you. So thank you again for stepping up.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I never miss an opportunity, Josh.
I would also like to thank your fellow members of the, of the department for being out here and supporting you, and the Chief, and the department, because again, another great sign of a department that really has a great, a great fraternity and sorority, I should say both. So I would entertain a motion regarding the ratification of the town manager's appointment of Police Sergeant John Morialy.
I move to ratify John Morialy as sergeant, excuse me, let me rephrase this. I move to ratify the appointment of John Morialy as sergeant in the Lunenburg Police Department.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I want to thank you for pronouncing the last E, by the way, as a fellow Italian, that's very important. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Wish you the best of luck there.
Thank you.
Continued success.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. As you can see, he is very well-supported. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sergeant Tossi, you may want to brush up your resume. Okay, the second ratification, the town manager's appointment of the DPW Director, Jim Donison. Jim, nice to meet you. Thank you for appearing in person.
You're welcome. All my fans are leaving, I think. I'm here on my own.
Well, you got the town manager, you got us.
Right.
Well, we're going to wait for a second while...
I didn't even recognize Sergeant Tossi.
The very, very silent floor of Town Hall.
It is squeaky.
Madam Town Manager, would you like to introduce Mr. Donison?
Yes, thank you. So I'm very pleased to present Jim Donison as the, for your request for ratification for his appointment as the next DPW Director. So Jim has worked the last three and a half years as the Director of Public Works for the city of Lebanon, New Hampshire, which is close to the size of Lunenburg, about 14,000 people approximately in Lebanon. And he was responsible for staff of over 50 employees there and for the divisions of highways, cemeteries, sewer, water, and solid waste landfill. And prior to that, he worked for the city of Lowell as their Commissioner of Department of Public Works and as the Assistant Director Town Engineer at Hookset, New Hampshire. He has over 30 years of engineering experience, and he's a registered PE in civil engineering in Massachusetts, has his grade for wastewater treatment plant operator's license in Massachusetts, and a certified professional in erosion and sediment control, and certified erosion and stormwater inspector. So I think he's highly qualified for the position. We look forward to working with Jim in this role.
Jim, if you'd like to say some words of introduction for yourself?
Sure. I, I think the town manager did a very good job summarizing my career. I, prior to municipal experience, I worked for consulting engineering firms in New Hampshire and Massachusetts up until 98, and then after that, I went to the municipal side of the business and have worked, as the town manager said, as a town engineer, assistant public works director, public works director, and I look forward to serving the town of Lunenburg and working with all of the town staff and the DPW staff and helping them grow a great department. Excellent.
I'm not familiar where Lebanon is, can you?
Lebanon is up 89, right near, right on the Vermont border, actually.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah.
Is that near White River Junction?
Yeah, White River Junction.
Okay, yeah. Near Dartmouth?
Pardon?
Near Dartmouth?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Dartmouth.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I'd just like to say welcome to Lunenburg. I have the utmost confidence in the town manager's hiring process, and I look forward to seeing what you can do for our DPW department.
Thank you.
I'll echo what Mr. Dwyer said, and thank you for being here and serving in the job.
Yeah, so I'm going to ask a couple of questions.
Sure.
A couple of comments. So first, thank you for expressing your interest in being selected for this position. I'm sure it's going to be a very rewarding, rewarding job. What's the reason, first question is, is this, you mentioned Lebanon, that's pretty far away.
Right.
Are you relocating or?
No, I live in Ware, New Hampshire.
Okay.
Do you know where Ware is?
I do, I do know where Ware is.
You do? Okay. Not Ware, Massachusetts.
Yeah, so that's not too...
So that's 35 miles door-to-door for me. So it's actually closer, believe it or not.
And what's the, what's the reason for leaving your current?
I look at, I'm actually retiring from the state of New Hampshire.
Okay.
Municipal Association.
I get it.
So that's part of it.
Yep, nope, makes perfect sense. You want to continue working, making money, but you can't stay in the New Hampshire system.
Right.
So I fully understand. My comment is that, you know, I think that in town, there's a couple of things that, first of all, I think Lunenburg residents are a little more engaged with DPW than probably commonly elsewhere.
Yeah.
That there, there has historically been a good relationship, I think, with whoever's in that position and residents in terms of outreach, social media posts, keeping people informed about things that affect them, and I think that that's been a success of, of the position over time. That's certainly something that I think should continue, is ensuring that residents are kept up to date through social media posts or et cetera. You know, one of the concerns that I raise, and I'll mention it now, because it's probably going to be the one thing I'll come back to, is the, our storm drains. So we have a good stormwater system, I think, in town, but we have a problem on Mass Ave, specifically, the state roads, that there's no cleaning up of the grates that cover up these drains. And so what's happening then are the people like myself who live on Mass Ave, and I happen to be right at the bottom of this hill, so all this water flows straight down and washes away my driveway. So every year, we're spending, you know, tonnage of, of stuff to come and just refill that driveway, and it would be fully resolved if the town just cleaned up the storm drains along the way, and the water would flow where it needs to flow. So that's something that I've been kind of mentioning, and there's other causes for it too. The other thing is, you know, you drive around our town in about July time period, and it looks like the sides of the roads are going to come out and grab your car and pull you into the woods. You know, we have a beautiful community, but we have to be better at our roadside maintenance. And I know that the capital plan this year calls for purchasing some equipment that will hopefully resolve that, but those are the things that I hear about from residents, that those are the complaints that I hear. And the last thing is, everybody loves Lunenburg's roads. So the roads that we have here, the snow removal service that, that residents have come to expect, it's, it's really the best caliber. During a snowstorm, you know, our roads are always the best, and it, and it really helps because a lot of people live in the Boston, work in the Boston area or have a long commute. Luckily now, it's a little less.
Yeah.
So I would just urge that you consider those in your new role, that those are things that, again, they seem pretty minor, pretty things that will, should be in a normal kind of schedule of events, and there are things that I know will be a high priority, and that's how residents will, you know, you can do 1,000 things great, but they're going to see a handful of stuff. They're just going to see the road conditions during a storm, they're going to see the sides of the roads, and those are the things that impact them, and so I would just urge your focus in those areas.
Absolutely, thank you.
That's it.
Yep, those are the most visible things, and, and people see that, and, and they often call Public Works, and so yes, I will attend to all those, all those items.
Thank you.
I will thank you for applying and obviously being the best candidate of the applicants. As Mr. Dwyer said, I, I totally have full confidence in the town manager's ability to choose somebody who is, you know, a great fit for the job and the community, and it sounds like coming from a smaller community, this is a good fit, and of course, your resume and all the certifications kind of spoke for themselves. So I thank you for that. When, when is the start date?
The start date is next week.
Next Monday?
Well, Monday, I think it's Patriots Day.
Oh.
Right?
So you don't work holidays?
Well, yeah. Probably not Monday. And...
How about Tuesday?
It might be, my wife just had hip surgery a week ago, so I'm tending to her, be in her caretake.
Excellent.
So we'll see how she's mending in the course of the next few days, but probably either Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday of next week.
Well, we look forward to having you onboard and...
Thank you.
Getting to know you better as you settle into the position.
Thank you.
With that being, do you want to add anything?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Or Madam Town Manager, do you want to add anything?
No, I think everything was said, thank you.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion regarding the ratification of the town manager's appointment of the DPW Director, Jim Donison.
I move to ratify the town manager's appointment of Jim Donison to the position of DPW Director.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see we are so, edging so close to 7:30, and I believe, unless I'm mistaken, Ms. Wiley is here, so let's, let's do the update from the Cultural Council before we do the public hearing, since we're not anywhere close to starting the public hearing on time anyway. Welcome.
Hello. This is my first time appearing before you guys.
Yeah, well, let's make it memorable.
Let's do it.
Tell us about all things cultural.
I can't speak for all things cultural, that's kind of, you know, a thing, but all I can say is that I was appointed to the Lunenburg Arts and Cultural Council in 2021. I took on the role of secretary. Unfortunately, that, my first meeting and many other members' first meeting was also the only two experienced people's last meeting. So when they left the council, a little bit of a hole was left, and I think we were, most of the council was expecting to get direction, but unfortunately, our president had some personal things pop up, so he wasn't attending to things as I think he intended. So Elaine Peterson, is that correct? Kind of reached out to everyone and was like, somebody respond, and I'm the one that raised my hand, so here I am now giving updates on the Cultural Council. So since that time, I've had several conversations with folks over at the Mass Cultural Council to sort of figure out, what does it mean to run a cultural council for a town, and what exactly are our responsibilities and what do we need to fulfill? Fortunately, I have a really good idea of what we need to do going forward. Unfortunately, we didn't have a quorum for the Mass Cultural Council until February. So we were, we should have been making votes on grant applications for funds from the town back in, the grants closed in October. We should have been making those votes in December. We didn't have enough members to do it. So, and of course, the holidays, nobody was really thinking about extra volunteer opportunities at that time, so the biggest response that I got to a call-out on Facebook on the town page is kind of just being like, hey, this is what's happening, we need people, was in January. So I believe you guys selected a bunch of folks in early February, so our list now is at about 10 people, which is great, because we only had four before, which is why we couldn't meet, and I believe we have an 11th looking to join soon. I'm not remembering his name.
I haven't seen any new talent by informs, but that doesn't mean that...
Yeah, yeah, but either way, I've been responding to town emails much more frequently than, you know, before figuring out that nobody else was responding, and we now have enough people. We're still meeting with the Mass Cultural Council to make sure that our numbers are on par for this year, and we know exactly what we have to give away, and then we are able to meet, as soon as we have those numbers, we're able to set a meeting, get those grant applications out, and moving forward this next year, making sure that everything is up to date and where it's supposed to be. So if there are any people out there who are grant applicants who are waiting for responses, I'm not ignoring you. I've responded to every one of you that's come into my email and saying, this is what's up, we are trying, we are doing our, our best, but we've got to get the numbers straight. And luckily, Donna Seiya, our treasurer, has been fulfilling all of our obligations, even without hearing from anybody. She's just been kind of plugging away at her job like the miracle worker she is, and making sure that people are getting the money that they need, but like I said, moving forward, we're waiting on those numbers. As soon as we have them, we'll set a meeting, we'll do the new grant system. The first meeting will probably be very long, so if anyone wants to come on and attend, you're welcome to, but it's probably going to be like two hours of going through the grant system, perhaps doing some revoting on structure of the council.
Two hours being very long is very, very subjective.
Well, considering we were able to do all of last year's grants in an hour with so many new people, yeah, two hours feels like a long...
Right.
Arts and Cultural Council meeting, but we're still moving forward. Like I said, we've got, luckily now, we have a list of 10 to 11 members, so we shouldn't have a problem meeting going forward, as long as all those people stay active, because as a volunteer board, I'm sure that you guys are aware, you send out emails and half of them respond with, I can't do this anymore. So that's where we're at.
I will say that I got, I guess somebody saw this on the agenda, or maybe it was just absolutely synchronicidous, but I did get a call today by somebody asking that they talked to a prior member who's no longer on the Culture Council, and asked about the, the art festival that had been had here, you know...
Two years ago?
Pre-pandemic, on the TC Passio's grounds, and somebody asked about that, the person who called me asked about that, and was told that, well, you know, there's, the pandemic rules and COVID-19 rules is preventing that, but I didn't, I don't believe there's anything in place now, so there are people out there and...
Who are interested?
Who are, well, this person called because they had artists that they knew that were interested in having a festival.
I'm a local artist, I'm interested in having a festival. Yeah, we... I'm a local artist. I'm interested in having a festival. Yeah, we, um, that is part of the, the Cultural Council's responsibilities would be to host festivals such as that, and we do have funds to do that. We would need to create a committee responsible. All the people who were responsible previously are no longer part of anything. But it's, I mean, it's my personal hope that we continue to do things like that for the town, because when I moved here, that was the, the first year that they had, it was the first year I had moved here, and I was so bummed that I'd missed it because that's like exactly what I'm looking for in the type of town that I live in. So I would like to make sure that those things continue. Um, but it takes volunteer time and hours and more than just me, unfortunately, to make things happen.
Now that you have the new, newly appointed members of the council, I think they all seem very excited and eager to, to do something.
Yes. And that's, I'm hoping that we can, we can move forward as a motivated crew after we hit our responsibilities from the Massachusetts.
So I just wanted to pass along that people are interested. I want to think, ask the town manager, is, is there any existing pandemic, uh, regulations here that would prevent, uh, uh, the art festival from happening outside?
No, there is not.
I didn't, I didn't think so. Okay. I just wanted to hear it said from you as well, so.
I can't imagine there would be.
Right. Well, I, again, the person who called me didn't think that it was, you know, necessarily accurate, and they didn't think the person was trying to mislead them. They just wanted to get verification, so.
It's entirely possible that that's the answer they got in 2020, was that.
Certainly in 2020.
Right.
Yeah. In 2020, you wouldn't have had anybody attending anyway.
Right.
So, um, I would open up to the board if anybody has any questions.
Happy to answer questions.
Ms. Wiley?
I have no questions.
First of all, thank you for grabbing the reins.
Yeah.
Uh, and, you know, moving this forward. And yeah, especially when something kind of stalls to get it kickstarted, there's a lot more energy than keeping it going. So I applaud that you, I, I think you're going to have a good team. The people who came before us here, like I said, seemed very energized and very willing to do it. And not that the people before them didn't, but again, yeah, everybody reaches their level of, okay, can I continue to do this? Because there are other things in their life they'd like to concentrate.
Right. And it's different when it's your last year doing something than your first. We all come in nice and motivated, so.
Yep.
I have a question. Should we expect that you're going to be the primary point of contact?
Uh, you're more than welcome to contact me. I think I'm the only one that's responding to town emails at the very least at the moment. So, um, even just in my current role as secretary, yeah, you can feel free to contact me. Um, and I've told Elaine the same. She can pass things along to me as things come to her inbox.
Who, who is the current leadership of, I mean officially?
Uh, officially on paper, it's Daniel Burns, um, who is a close personal friend of mine, and even he has been like, thank you.
This is not meant to, to cite anybody or criticize. I just want to know.
No, yeah, I think, uh, he's the one who's listed on this, on the website, and I've got a, I would like to officially meet with the rest of the council before I say, put my name there. But that's probably what's going to happen is my name will go there. Unless somebody else, some, one of the new people is really motivated, uh, to take on the leadership responsibility. Because I'm okay to, I was a camp director for ten years. I'm okay to like follow for a little bit, but I don't think, I don't think that's what the universe has in store for me, so.
I believe you and I had, a few months ago, had a couple of false starts on having a conversation at some point. I'd like to rekindle that. Life happened. So I, I just, I would like to just have a discussion at some point, just learn a little bit more and understand more about the Cultural Council. So, but we can do that offline.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
I'm happy to do it with any of you.
Yeah. Uh, one thing I was thinking about actually is, you know, I'm part of the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee. And we're, and our first meeting, you know, or our meeting in May, the first meeting in May is going to be a discussion about programming in terms of what we use the buildings for.
Yes.
But as we develop that conversation, I will definitely want to reach out.
Please.
Because I think that there's, there's going to be some questions and some opportunities perhaps, and we're going to want to get some ideas. So I think it would be, so that's why I asked if, who the point of contact will be, so that way I know who to.
Yeah, I mean, at the very least, I'll be able to point you in the direction of who, who you should speak to, but in all likelihood, it's probably me. And as a former camp director, I absolutely love programming in general, so.
All right.
I'm just, I'm just here currently being a stay-at-home mom, being a resource where needed.
Well, hey, that's a career in and of itself.
It, uh, it's definitely work.
Where Mr. Jeffries went is where I'd like to go partially to in, in thinking about programming for the future and building space and all of that.
Absolutely. Yeah, I feel like we're at, uh, a little bit of a disadvantage in that Pittsburgh, I feel like, has such a rich arts
Yeah.
scene kind of going on, and we have the people and the talent here as well. Um, so to have to send everybody to Pittsburgh for things feels unfortunate. Not that it's that far. I literally live like a rock's throw from Pittsburgh.
It's venue. I mean, we need a venue.
Right. I know.
They have lots of, they have lots of available space.
Yes. Did anyone attend the, um, Smokehouse Coffee Roasters, um, like craft fair that they did back in December? It was very well attended, and they have, I don't know if you've been at Smokehouse Coffee Roasters, but they have a lot of space. And there were lot, lots of artists there.
Well, there's a lot of artists. I mean, I know when the Pittsburgh Art Museum has their regional show, there's lots of people. There's at least usually about six or seven artists of, of, you know, who make that show. It's a jury show. So there are lots of artists in Lunenburg and people who are very active and interested. So it's just a venue. I wish we had a venue that we could, you know, available, so.
Well, it sounds like soon maybe we might.
We may. Any other questions?
No.
Mr. Chair, I just want to ask.
Yes.
Um, Elise, can you speak to the types of programs that the Cultural Council has funded, applications in the past? I know the current ones are pending, but previous ones?
Sure. Um, unfortunately, the, the 2021 funding is the only one that I've been a part of, so it's all I can, I can speak to. But, um, we get lots of applications for music. I know we sponsored, um, a music and dance group at the Senior Center. We sponsored several programs at the library, whether storytelling or, you know, sort of science show and tell. But a lot of the, the library, in fact, anything that the library applied to, they got, uh, funds for because everybody loves programming at the library. Those are the ones I can think of off the top of my head. There were several concerts, um, I know that, that applied that then ended up not happening because they were still in the midst of COVID, figuring out what they wanted to, to do. We did fund some of the, uh, Acton Discovery Museum. Applied for, for a grant for funds. I know we funded some of that because I know a lot of our citizens make the trip out there with their kids, including myself. Let's see. There was the, I just, I can just remember him as the cheeseburger guy. Cheeseburger chainsaws. It was a presentation for middle schoolers, um, sort of on confidence and being yourself. Uh, they, we funded that. And one of the roles and responsibilities of the Cultural Council that we unfortunately didn't get a chance to do this past year because we weren't aware it was one of our roles and responsibilities, is to actually host meetings with the town to let them know that these grants are available. So it's an all possibility that we have great performers and programs ready to run from people right here within our town that don't know that the money's available. So I'm looking forward to this year, moving forward, making sure that that is voiced sort of across the town. Because last year, we had money we couldn't spend. We didn't have enough applicants, uh, for grants. Especially not locally, because we always prioritize what's going to be local, who has a partnership here in the community. You know, are they going to run at the Boys and Girls Club? Are they going to run at the Senior Center? Or are they running, you know, at, at some giant venue somewhere else, and they're just looking for a few dollars? Um, we always prioritize what's going to happen here, who's working with us here, and who's made connections in the community already. So I hope that answers your question.
Sorry, you're way back there. It does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Keep us posted as things progress and as the group comes together. And when you have those, um, public meetings for the public that you just described, please come back here and announce them so that gets the biggest exposure you can.
Will do.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
And thank you guys all for having me, this being my, my first experience here. Now I'll know I can come again.
Yes, and hopefully it was, hopefully it was memorable, like I said.
I'll remember. I'll cherish it. I'll cherish the memory.
We don't want to overdo it, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Skolbrine, you are here. So I don't want to make you wait, so let's, let's, uh, do the interview for you too now. Appointment to the APDC, filling the residence role. You are from Five Valley Road. And here, I would ask you to introduce yourself and, uh, why you want to be part of the APDC?
Um, I, uh, I go by Tony, but my name is Anthony Skolbrine. Um, I am the elder. Uh, my son has recently been appointed to the School Committee, and he's planning on running for the remaining of the term that he has. And why am I interested in doing this? Uh, historic preservation has been a, a pretty significant part of my professional career. Uh, I was the environmental manager at Wright Patterson Air Force Base. And in that position, I was responsible for the management and the maintenance of, uh, one of America's most historic, uh, military installations, Wright Patterson Air Force Base. And the Wright is associated, Wright part of Wright Patterson is associated with the Wright Brothers. The Wright Brothers learned how to fly at what's now known as Wright Patterson Air Force Base. And, um, while the history of the Wrights was significant, there was a lot of other firsts associated with aviation. Hence, the base was very historic. And in my, uh, professional career, my job was to manage the maintenance and the management of those historic facilities. Uh, my organization was responsible for interface with the State Historic Preservation Office of Ohio. When I started that job, uh, I'm a civil engineer by training and education. And when I started in that position, um, a lot of folks were a little apprehensive about having an engineer be responsible for state historic preservation activities, including the state of Ohio. And, uh, I think we managed to convince them that engineers aren't always bad. We don't always want to tear down buildings. In fact, some of us like to save buildings. And that was, uh, a big part of my professional career. I actually had two, two careers. I then transitioned into the world of the National Park Service. I didn't work for the National Park Service. I actually worked with them. I, uh, I ended my professional career as the, uh, executive director of a national heritage area called the National Aviation Heritage Area, which was associated with, uh, the Wright Brothers. And, um, and I was also a member of a nonprofit board, a Main Street program board that owned historic facilities in the Wright Dunbar, uh, Village District, which was a National Historic Registered District, where the Wright Brothers and Paul Lawrence Dunbar lived together at the, uh, the end of the nineteenth century and the beginning of the twentieth century. So I've had a great deal of experience and a lot of interest in saving historic buildings. I think I can, I can bring, um, you know, some, some professional skills to the role of being a member of the Architectural Preservation District. And, uh, you know, this is my first chance to be in this building. And, uh, and I can tell you that it looks pretty good, you know, from a historic, from a standpoint of historic structures. I've been in a lot worse buildings that, uh, were historic, including the Brothers Print Shop. And the first time I walked in there, I thought I was going to go through the floor, um, because of the rot in the wood. I, I didn't have that experience here. So you've done a good job of maintaining a facility that truly defines, uh, this historic, uh, district, the Architectural Preservation District. So I look forward to, uh, to receiving the appointment. And, um, I, I, uh, welcome the opportunity to serve as a citizen of the new town that I live in. Um, I'm a transplant. I've only been in, uh, the town of Lunenburg for two years. And I, and I love the town. I think it's got a lot of character. The people are great. Um, it's a, it's a wonderful place for us to start a new life. Um, and we've enjoyed every minute that we've been here in the town of Lunenburg.
That's great to hear, and we certainly welcome you and, and your whole family, uh, here too. And thank you for your participation, both you and your son, uh, for stepping forward.
You, you guys, uh, you do a lot for the town, and, uh, I think that e- every citizen, I think, has an obligation to support the place where they live and to support its elected officials. We might not always agree with you, but we have an obligation to support what you stand for.
Um, I like you already. So, uh, I, wouldn't I ask you one question? Have you met with the APDC?
Um, actually, I did not meet with the committee, but I did meet with Richard McGrath. Uh, I was supposed to meet with the committee, uh, but their meeting was canceled due to some unforeseen problem that Richard had that evening. But my plan is obviously to meet with them. But he and I had a, a great conversation. We went through, uh, a lot of the, uh, the issues that have been faced that the AP, uh, APDC has been dealing with. Um, I can assure you that I've read everything that is online on the town of Lunenburg's website associated with the, uh, APDC. Very familiar with the language of the bylaw, um, and the map and the district that it represents. And, uh, I think that, uh, I look forward to being able to do more with the committee members and with other supporting elements of the committee structures that exist within the town of Lunenburg.
Excellent.
Most notably, the Lunenburg Municipal, uh, uh, Municipal Building Design Committee. I think there's a huge play. Um, all of the buildings that the, uh, Lunenburg Municipal Design Committee or is dealing with, they're all in the Architectural Preservation District. There's no outliers, not like, uh, Public Safety, not like the Department of Public Works, so.
I would ask the committee, if they, the board, if they have any questions?
I have no questions. I'd just like to say thank you for stepping forward. I remember, uh, I believe you spoke at, I think it was a special town meeting. And, uh, I, I'm glad to see that you've, uh, stepped forward to volunteer. Um, thank you for going through your, your professional background. You're, you're obviously more than qualified for the position, and, uh, we look forward to having you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for stepping forward and volunteering. And yes, I agree, you're more than qualified. I, I do wonder, this is a unique opportunity, if you could clear something up for us right here and now. Are the alien bodies at Wright Pat or Waswell?
They are, they are at Wright Patterson Air Force Base.
Okay, okay.
They're in, they're in Hangar Four, uh, which is one of the most secured buildings at Wright Patterson Air Force Base. And, uh, I can tell you that, uh, that is something that everybody who works at Wright Patterson Air Force Base is very familiar with. And, and you know, we, we joke about this, but you know, uh, here recently, you know, the Department of Defense has actually come out and said there are some unexplained things that are happening. For us who worked at Wright Patterson Air Force Base, that we, we know, we know what's going on.
I'll have to review what season and episode on X-Files that was on, but we'll, we'll have to look that up.
If you can provide some photographs, that would be appreciated, all right?
I'll have to speak to some of my friends who remain at the base, see if they can, see if they can share something with you.
Mr. Jeffries? Yeah, so I, you know, after the special town meeting, we immediately connected with one another. Uh, I think there was a recognition on both of our parts that, uh, that we could work together and that, uh, there's a lot of opportunity here. And I, you know, I, I, and, and now that I'm in the role of, of chairing the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee, one of the things that we had, that we had discussed was how important it is for the APDC representative to attend the meetings. Um, and so we, which we haven't had, um, we haven't had an active participation over the last couple of years. And so I mentioned, I mentioned some of this to, to Tony and, uh, and him being on the APDC. So a couple of things that we, you know, you've attended our, our recent meetings, you've participated. You know, the, uh, Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee meetings are, are really public meetings. They're open to anyone who wants to participate, uh, as well as the committee members, you know, that, you, one of the things that you had, that we discussed was, was broad, and it stuck with me, and it really has, uh, affected our direction on the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee. Uh, was that, you know, we have to go with the building that people feel passionate about. I know we use different words, but since we're on TV, um, that we have to go with a building that people feel passionate about. And it has changed our approach, that as we figure out what to do with TC Passios, we're starting with this building. Um, and how we can continue the main, you know, to maintain usage of this building for, you know, for the foreseeable future, how we can do that for the Ritter Building, although it may be a different programmed use, but how we can, you know, and so that really has started how we've approached things, with some of the feedback you gave of, you know, you're not going to get anywhere down there if we don't have a solid plan for here. Uh, and that's from a position of experience. So I appreciate, first of all, your level of detail. Um, you know, I value detail very highly. I'm probably too detailed. So I really appreciate your level of detail. I appreciate you stepping up, and I really, I can already see the impact you're having on our community, you being a member, a resident here in town, and, and I, I know great things will come in the future. So I, I, you know, you and I have talked, I think, a lot about your kind of vision, your experience in this realm, and I'm, I'm happy to work with you.
It's a pleasure to work with you too, Michael Ray, so, and looking forward to it.
We have, I'll read into the record, uh, an email from Richard McGrath, who says, gentlemen of the select board, I recommend Tony Skolbrine to be appointed to the APDC. His profession as a civil engineer and his extensive experience in the historic preservation for the Air Force, as well as experience with Wright Brothers historical sites and administrative duties dealing with preservation, qualifies him to be appointed to the APDC. His understanding and skills will be useful in the coming years as the Village District is developed in protecting the contributing properties and guiding and communicating with the many different interests in our town to assure great outcomes for the Architectural Preservation District. So a glowing recommendation there. I'm going to tie it into our previous, uh, appointment. I'm going to tie it into our previous appointment. Do you pronounce or don't pronounce the last E?
It's E, Scollinbrini.
All right. I like it. I didn't want to take it for granted, but that's two in one night. So I'm feeling very comfortable. So, Madam Town Manager, do you have anything to add?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Anybody else? Then I would entertain a motion regarding the appointment of Tony Scollinbrini to the APDC as the resident member, term to expire June 30th, 2025.
My move to appoint Anthony Scollinbrini to the Architectural Preservation District with a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Congratulations. And at your earliest convenience, visit the town clerk's office to be sworn in before the next meeting and you can, we will let the committee know, but you can also contact them and say that you've been appointed as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I look forward to it. Thank you very much, Tony.
You do too. Thank you so much for coming forward. All right. So it's 7:05, right on time. Public hearing, which was published in the, the notice was in the Lunenburg Ledger of, on April 1st. Notice is hereby given that the select board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 12th, 2022, at 7:05 PM to review the administrative organizational plan presented by the town manager in accordance with Section 5-1 Subsection B of the Town Charter regarding the impending creation of the position of Facilities Director. Copy of the plan will be available for review in the town manager's office on Tuesday, April 5th, 2022. The hearing will be held in the second floor meeting room, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. 01462. So, Madam Town Manager, if you would introduce your plan, please, to the public.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to add that besides being available in our office, I also provided it to the town clerk, in case anyone visited the town clerk's office, and put it up on the town website as well, on the front page under news and announcements with the other town meeting materials. So the reason this is coming before the board in a public hearing format is this is a requirement, like you said, that was in the notice per the Town Charter. And this position, which would be a new position, which would create a new agency within the town government's organization, is a requirement. So as the board is aware, this has been a goal of both the board and myself. For the last two years, we've discussed this. And the goal would be to recreate our agency in the government and improve the long-term and short-term facilities management of town facilities. So currently, this is delegated to the DPW Director. And this organization proposal creates a new director-level position to, that will be responsible for town facilities as well as grounds maintenance. So after reviewing the organizational structure of the Department of Public Works and due to the limited staff within this department, that has a wide range and breadth of responsibilities, it was my recommendation to create this new position to head for facilities and grounds. And just to discuss the charter process, the select board shall hold one or more public hearings on the proposal, giving notice and a publication in a local newspaper. And that will describe the scope of the proposal and the time and place at which the hearing will be held, not less than seven, not more than 14 days following the publication. Secondly, the organization or reorganization plan shall become effective at the expiration of 60 days following the date of the proposal submitted to town meeting, unless town meeting, by a majority vote, within such period votes to disapprove the plan. Town meeting may only vote to approve or disapprove the plan and may not vote to amend or alter it. The town manager, through the administrative plan and subject only to express prohibitions in general law or this charter, may reorganize, consolidate, abolish any town agency in whole or in part, establish such new agencies, provided that there are no, it must define any bylaws which will be affected by this organization reorganization plan, which there, after review, there are no bylaws that would be affected. And every reorganization plan submitted by the town manager pursuant to this section shall contain any such proposed bylaws, which I, like I said, there are no proposed bylaws in this reorganization plan. And the plan must be accompanied by a message from the town manager which explains the benefits that are expected to ensue. So all, so far, the adherence that the charter process has been followed. And the hearing is tonight. We can hold a secondary hearing if needed, which would probably be the first meeting in May prior to the town meeting. That's only if it's needed. And then it will be voted on at town meeting to approve or disapprove the plan. So the benefits of creating the director position for facilities and grounds, I'll review those key benefits. So hiring this level of position, which would be a professional level position that has a background in facilities management, would be a great improvement to facilities management for the town. And facilities management is not typical for a Department of Public Works Director. So typically, you don't see that background for most Directors of Public Works. An individual with this skill set will enhance and improve the town's current and future facilities management plan. This management-level position whose sole focus is long-term and short-term planning and maintenance of town facilities and grounds. And since the DPW Director is responsible for multiple different divisions, town facilities only receives a portion of that position's focus. Another key benefit is there will be more preventative maintenance and less reactionary maintenance of our facilities and grounds. This position would collaborate with the school's counterpart position on the overall maintenance plan for facilities and grounds, and work with the town manager and finance director on capital planning and financing alternatives. Another benefit would be, it would be a directed effort towards the health and safety of all the staff and users of town facilities, and would create and maintain a property condition assessment of all town facilities and grounds utilizing the facilities management software. So there are a number of responsibilities, responsibilities outlined in the proposed job description. But as you can hear from what I relayed so far, they're specific to facilities and grounds, operational and comprehensive nature to building maintenance and repair coordination oversight and supervision of staff, as well as working with school personnel, the school facilities director, on having that collaborative approach to town by, town and school facilities. Are there any questions relative to the proposed plan?
Any questions from the board?
Comments?
Mr. Dwyer, none?
No.
Mr. Franco?
No questions.
Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, I want to, I want to offer the comment that, you know, this is, this is the way to go. I highly support this direction. I think that this plan as presented by the town managers has been very well thought out in terms of, you know, what the adherence is, not just the adherence to the process, but in terms of the benefits to the community by moving in this direction, the reasons why this position is necessary. And then also, you know, the, the duties that are gonna, that are gonna, by which, the duties of the position. So I think this is excellent. You know, I think that one of the things that I want to just highlight here is within the, within the duties, that there's this focus on the optimal facility use by staff, residents, and those who seek to conduct business with or in the town to ensure an effective user experience. Now, I want to just focus on that language, because I think that that really is the crux of what we're, of what this is all about, is that, you know, we need to have someone in a role that is able to really focus on what is the experience working in the buildings? What is experience coming to the buildings? Having that as the mindset and that really kind of guides everything that you need to do. Because that's, you know, everything that human beings, most of the things that we've created as a species happens inside of a building. Most of the moments that we have that make us extraordinarily happy or extraordinarily sad, most of the human experience is inside of a building. And so it is so important that, that we have buildings that facilitate human activity. Because that's really what this is all about. So this is the right direction. And, you know, I'm very passionate about this. This is my career. So I'm very passionate about this. And I think this couldn't, this couldn't be better. So I want to just thank the town manager for how she's put this together, the outreach she's done to, to be able to present such a comprehensive plan. And, and clearly, this person's going to be set up for success, including, you know, if in the future there is a permeation to this role and an expansion or a combination with the schools, that this position is already set up to establish those relationships already, to kind of, you know, maintain a positive cohesive approach. You know, this really is the way to go. So thank you, thank you Heather, specifically for this.
Thank you.
I would also agree that I am very pleased with the way this was defined and fleshed out and what it intends to accomplish. I think it's a long time coming, and I think it covers all the important bases. It should be known or noted here that this excludes town, you know, school buildings, but there is a coordination factor in here that this position will coordinate with the, the school facilities head, and try to keep it under one umbrella, but there is no direct organizational hierarchy here. So it's basically just a cooperation between them. But yes, I think we need somebody who's maintaining these and who's addressing these. And I think your point that the DPW Director and the DPW Department with all the already existing sub, sub-departments really is overloaded and this really needs to be its own separate entity. And so I do also support not only the construction of it and the implementation of it, but also the monetary value that you've assigned to it seems to be appropriate for the job.
Thank you.
Because it's a public hearing, I will open it up to the public. Mr. Passios.
Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street. A couple of questions, probably through you, Mr. Chair to the town manager. I have not seen the document yet, so, you know, I haven't perused through the idiosyncrasies of it from my perspective, but I have a couple of questions. One is the chain of command. And two, the shift of positions from the DPW Director to this new position. My understanding is that there are, I'm thinking three that will shift to, under his jurisdiction, away from the DPW. And then this person, who I'm assuming answers directly to the town manager. I guess it's a yes and yes to the answers, if I'm correct.
I'll ask, I'll ask the town manager to respond.
Thank you. So, Mr. Passios, yes, the chain of command would change from the facility, current facility staff reporting to the DPW Director to now would propose to be reporting to this new position, as well as the recreation director, part-time recreation director. The recreation seems like a natural fit under facilities and grounds. There's a lot of overlap that facilities deals with. So, and from the facilities director position, yes, would report to the town manager.
Directly to the town manager. Okay, thank you. Two, two comments I'd like to make. And the first one is, actually, both comments are coming from me as a citizen of Lunenburg, none of the boards that I am seated on. The first one, relative to the rec director, I, I question whether that's an appropriate fit. Maybe it's the best we can do right now, but programming, how does that, what does that have to do with facilities and grounds? You know, we don't have a, a boots-on-the-ground superintendent that's going around and mowing lawns and, and fixing up buildings and, and things like that. So I, I don't think that's a great fit, but I don't, I, I won't push hard against that move at this point. I think that needs to be looked at down the road. My second comment is that I agree with Mr. Jeffries. This is a move in, in the right direction. Excuse me. Brings Lunenburg into the century a little bit better. But we've got to keep in mind that, from my perspective, this is an administrative position. So it's not putting more boots on the ground to accomplish what we need to do to take care of our buildings and grounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody whose hand is up on Zoom? I don't see many people on Zoom, but I will ask. Madam Town Manager, do you see anybody's hands up?
No, there is no one with hands raised. There's only one other person on Zoom.
Okay. So with that, I think this is concluded. We can determine if we need to have another public hearing. I would presume, given the attendance here, prob, wait. Mr. Passios has another question.
Yeah, well, it's not actually a question, just a comment. There will be another opportunity for this. It's going to be reviewed Thursday night at the Finance Committee meeting. So it'll be reviewed again there.
Thank you. My comment was going to be more to what the town manager says, that we could have a second one if we need to at our April 26th, but I don't believe we'll need one, but we can determine that, well, we'd have to determine it now, because we'd have to advertise for it. I don't see the need, because it doesn't seem to be a lot of people clamoring to be here tonight. And they will be able to hear it at the, as Mr. Passios said, at the Finance Committee meeting on Thursday evening, they'll be discussing this.
That is a public hearing.
And that is also a public hearing. Thank you. Does anybody concur or disagree?
I concur.
I concur as well.
Okay. So, I, I will then close this public hearing. And we will go right into a town manager report.
Okay. Thank you. I will start with the existing vacancies. And currently, there is now one vacancy in the Architectural Preservation District Commission after the board's appointment tonight. And there is one vacancy on the Economic Development Committee, one regular member vacancy, and two associate vacancies for the Green Communities Committee, and one vacancy on the Historical Commission. And I just want to touch on that just briefly with the board. There was a question from one of the Historical Commission members, why there were any vacancies, because they thought their membership was of five. Mass General Law stipulates up to seven members on the Historical Commission, if you accept that general law. And I asked the town clerk to look into the town meeting votes that were taken relative to the Historical Commission. And she located the vote where the Historical Commission was created, or that Mass General Law was accepted at a town meeting. And there was a subsequent vote that defined the membership as six members of the Historical Commission. So I believe what would need to be done if they, because they are worried about getting a form for their meetings, having six numbers instead of five, and that they would have to go back to town meeting to redefine that as a five-member board.
I'd love to know why we, I can't recall. I'm sure that happened while, you know, recently, but can't imagine why we'd make something an even-numbered board, ever.
I'm not sure of why that was done. That's very atypical. Just to add on, so anyone interested in any of these positions can find the application form on the town website, complete the form, return it to the select board's office, and if anyone... And if anyone has any questions on the roles and responsibilities of these positions as well, they can reach out to our office at 978-582-4130, extension 144. Current employment opportunities with the town, there is currently a conservation administrator position being advertised, a digital service staff librarian position being advertised, the equipment operator position, the DPW, seasonal lifeguards, a trash and recycling coordinator position, a van driver position, and videographer positions. And information on those employment opportunities can be found on the website as well, under employment opportunities. And you can find the job posting and how to apply on the town website. Earth Day cleanup events, there are some news on that. The DPW is once again providing trash bags for residents to pick up if they wish to clean up pollution on the side of the roads. They can bring those filled up bags back to the DPW to dispose of. So thank you to the DPW for again doing that. And I was contacted by a Lunenburg High School student who's looking to create an event to provide trash cloths and gloves to people to clean up particular areas in town that need to be cleaned up and provide pamphlets to people on what is and what is not recyclable, what is pollution and how everyone can help lessen the problem. So more to come on that. I think the student is still trying to organize something and we will advertise it if we get that information. Also, our DEP Regional Coordinator let me know today that Townsend is holding an Earth Day event on April 23rd from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the North Middlesex Regional High School parking lot where they're offering free document disposal. You can bring your textiles and eye gloss, old eye glosses, they'll be collecting those as well as returnable bottle and can drive. They're accepting donations of used bikes, baby items, cake cups, and chip bags. And they'll also be doing a plant swap. So that is on April 23rd, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Community funding project requests to U.S. Representative Lori Trahan. So last week, the Assistant Town Manager, Land Use Director and I met virtually with a staffer of Lori Trahan's office regarding community needs and any potential community funding project requests, which they needed a response by April 11. These community project funding requests are similar to earmarks that we get requested by each year from our state delegation, but they're subject to more strict transparency and accountability rules to ensure their funding process. So each member of Congress has the opportunity to present 15 community project requests to the appropriations committee. And from there, 15 of these requests are, they're selected to submit, but there's also no guarantee, just like the earmarks from the state, that we'll receive funding. The two projects that I submitted, because another piece of the requirements is that the project needs to be no more than $3 million and has to show that the town has matched some funding towards the project. And we had two that kind of matched that criteria. One being the Flat Hill Road Culvert Project because the town did appropriate $428,000 previously and we're looking to supplement that funding for that project. And the 30 School Street Project, as we're pending the town meeting votes, there'll be money appropriated towards the hazardous materials abatement, demolition of the building, and engineering costs. So those were the two projects that were submitted. Any questions on that?
Questions? Nope.
Okay. Update on two grants. The fire chief submitted and was awarded a grant in the amount of $2,116 for an automated external defibrillator that will replace an obsolete unit in one of the fire trucks. And the police chief submitted and was awarded a grant in the amount of $7,900 towards the cost of new exercise equipment at the Public Safety Building. And this was under our insurance carrier's wellness grant. And streetlight update. So now that we have settled on a purchase price for the streetlights with Unitil, our council has been told to move forward analyzing the purchase and sale agreement. We, as another piece of this, as far as finalizing that purchase and sale agreement, we'll need to start soliciting proposals for the maintenance of the streetlights because once we purchase them from Unitil, Unitil will no longer be responsible for maintaining those lights. And also related to this, proposals for streetlight design services and project oversight are due this Thursday and the Green Communities Committee has a meeting scheduled for Thursday at 5:30 to review the proposals and discuss the grant application, which is due April 22nd. The Green Communities funding only covers the cost of the LED light conversion. That proves that it will be energy savings to the town. So, so we must build in the design cost to bundle the two, both the design cost and the LED conversion to demonstrate that we're going to be achieving energy savings. The other project that will be submitted in this next grant application will be for the cruiser that's on the FY23 capital plan. It's a hybrid cruiser and similar to the last Green Communities plan, we can receive up to $5,000 towards, towards this purchase of that cruiser. Update on COVID from the Board of Health. The total number of new cases reported as of April 22nd was six and the positivity rate was 1.03%. In other meetings, events, and announcements, yard waste collection days at Young's Road will begin Saturday starting April 16th until May 21st. And the collection is open from 8:00 AM until 4:00 PM. And the Lunenburg Lions Club will host an Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April 16th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And that will be in the field between the TCP Building and Kids Kingdom. And Lunenburg Farmer's Market will start on Sunday, June 12th. And that will go until Sunday, so every Sunday until Sunday, September 25th. And as the chairman noted earlier, town meeting is May 7th at 9:00 AM at the middle school, high school auditorium. Another announcement related to that that was sent out on the townwide email related to town meeting was that we're going to be utilizing the electronic voting clickers at this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Town Manager. Anybody have any questions for the town manager on anything in the report?
Yes.
Mr. Jeffries.
On the streetlights, to the town manager, on the streetlights, it's good that we finally, that there was finally an agreement with Unitil on the purchase and sale price. Now, I recall that this was a, a town meeting vote that allocated the, the funding for this. So do you happen to know handily, you know, what the amount that was appropriated was versus the amount that now Unitil has agreed to sell them for?
The appropriation was $91,000 and the purchase price will be a few hundred dollars more than that.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, old business discussion on fiscal year 2023 budget, capital plan, financial forecast, and the annual town meeting warrant articles. Do we have updates, Madam Town Manager, for, for any of those?
No updates. There was a slight change in some of the indirect costs for the public access and sewer enterprise, but those amounted to like around a hundred dollars or in the ballpark, so.
Any questions about any of those documents from the board?
I have a comment.
Yes?
So last week, when we were discussing, when we were reviewing our recommendations for approval of the different warrant articles that would appear on the warrant, I asked a question about Article 17, which was funding, article presented by the cemetery commissioners regarding funding for, I believe it was about $10,000 to use the proceeds from the sale of cemetery lots for different purposes. And I brought up that, it was brought to my attention by a resident and, and also, you know, I didn't mention this last week, but by staff, I couldn't recall that portion, that there was this construction of what looked to be some headstones that were, you know, in the town and would appear to be on private property. And I asked the question if that was a, you know, a normal usage of those funds. And the town manager replied that she was looking into that. So I would, I just wanted to provide an update. I know that there was some concern after I made that question that, that there was some, you know, accusation of some improper, something improper. So I first want to thank the town manager for looking into this and, and just want to share the answer. So the answer is that, you know, cemetery commissioners may use funds from the sale of cemetery lots for things that aren't necessarily in the cemeteries and that it can be an appropriate use of the, of the funding for memorials or other things that are throughout the community. It also was that this, the cemetery commissioners did not fund though, these particular memorials. That these two memorials that were, that were erected were funded through the Historical Commission and other funding sources. So just wanted to add that clarification to Article 17 there. And so I don't suspect then that we will have difficulty. I, we did defer that article recommendation. It seemed last week as if there was support for the article. I will also support the article and recommend its approval at town meeting. And that's it.
I guess, so thank you for that update that we all received. I would just probably issue a comment that I'd be, I would say to this board and to all elected and appointed committees, boards, commissions, to be careful because the, what was brought forward last week was, was something that had, we had not done any research on and gave the implication that potentially another elected body was using funds outside of the scope of their authority, which they were not, that the town manager's investigation showed that. And so we, I would caution everybody to be very careful in what they imply in the statements because regardless of how the person, you know, Mr. Jeffries thinks it sounded to many people, it sounded like an, an implication of impropriety in the funding. And then he linked that impropriety to not wanting, or to wanting to defer the funding from a very, you know, pro forma article of funding. And he's certainly trying to link those two, which again, I mentioned then. So again, I would caution about how those come out. Asking questions is one thing, but you know, bringing things into the public arena without much factual basis that potentially undermines another body and then undermines potentially the public trust in that body are serious things. And I think we should be very, very careful in how we word those things in the future.
I'd like to comment on your comment. You know, I, I think that we're certainly, you know, we're all entitled to our own opinions about things and, and I can respect that, as I say often, that reasonable people disagree and it's par for the course. You know, I don't happen to agree at all with your assessment or what occurred last week. I mean, I know that you were, you were vocal and that you felt as if there was an accusation that was being made. You know, I, after getting an email, I went back through and watched this portion of the meeting that we had last week and it was simply a question. And, you know, there was an accusation that was made last week by you, Mr. Chair, that there was some suggestion of impropriety, but I certainly don't think it's inappropriate to ask the question of, is it appropriate for the cemetery commissioners? While we're discussing an article about, do we recommend for the town to approve an article to give the cemetery commissioners funding to spend? I think it's completely within the realm of normal conversation and appropriate due diligence to ask if you've heard, and you know, we don't get the benefit of meeting behind closed doors and discussing things privately. So we do have to talk about things that we have incomplete information on in a public setting. And I think that, you know, I have trust at the electorate at home who watches these meetings, that they can understand that sometimes we're going to talk about things and bring it up for the first time that we may not have the full picture on. So, you know, I, I understand that it is important to be cautious about accusing an elected board of inappropriate activities. That is not at all what occurred last week. It was a question and it's actually a really interesting answer. I had no idea that the cemetery can use funding to erect memorials or other things. Not that they did, they did not, but I had no idea that they could. And so the answer is it is an appropriate use if that was something that they chose to do. It just happens to be that it wasn't something that they chose to do and that it was something that was funded through another source. But I, I agree in the concept. I do not agree that this is a good example to utilize for that comment.
I won't go into your exact words, but it's on the record, so.
It certainly is.
Discussion on consent calendar for annual town meeting warrant articles. So the town manager has provided a list of articles that from her perspective should not cause any much debate and that are, some of them are just standard ones that are here. This is the list and then we can discuss them. So Article 1, that the town vote to pass over Article 1, having accepted regular written reports from the town offices and committees, that we put Article 2, that's to vote to reauthorize all revolving funds for certain town departments, boards, committees, agencies, or offices for the spending limits as printed in the annual town meeting warrant. To vote that the sum of 500 from free cash paid for prior year expenses, that the town vote to transfer from free cash $100,000 to the stabilization fund, that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $450,000 to the special purpose, special stabilization fund, that the town vote to transfer from fee cash the amount of, the sum of $266,696 in transfer from sewer enterprise retained earnings, the sum of $656 to the OPEB trust fund established at the 2000, the November 30th, 2010 special town meeting. Article 12, that the town vote to appropriate from the sewer enterprise fund revenues, the sum of $853,112.53, transfer from the sewer capital reserve stabilization fund, the sum of $20,000, transfer from the sewer reserve capacity fund, the sum of $20,962, and appropriate from sewer enterprise retained earnings, the sum of $319,107.47. For total appropriation of $1,213,182, top rate the sewer enterprise fund for FY23. And further, that $793,968.47 be included in appropriations from the general fund for indirect costs and be allocated to the sewer enterprise fund. Basically, that's just running the sewer department. At the town vote to transfer, Article 13, that the town vote to transfer from sewer enterprise retained earnings, the sum of $35,548.86 into the sewer capital reserve stabilization fund. Article 14, that the town vote to appropriate from solid waste disposal enterprise revenues, the sum of $302,000, to operate the solid waste disposal program. Fifteen, that the town vote to appropriate from water revenue, water enterprise revenues, the sum of $25,000 to operate the water department. Article 16, that the town vote to appropriate from PEG access and cable-related revenues, the sum of $152,477, and appropriate from the PEG access and cable-related enterprise retained earnings, the amount of $11,090, for a total appropriation of $163,567 to fund the operating and capital budgets of the PEG access and cable-related enterprise fund for FY23. And further, that $47,808 be included in appropriations from the general fund for indirect costs and be allocated to the PEG access and cable-related enterprise fund. And lastly, Article 20, that the town vote to And lastly, Article 20, that the town vote to amend Chapter 70 of the town's general bylaws entitled, quote, salary administration plan, unquote, Schedule A as follows, that the position of council on aging assistant meal site manager be added and assigned to grade three, the position of council on aging meal site manager be changed from a grade three to grade six, the position of firefighter AEMT call to be added and, and assigned to grade 10, and the position of firefighter paramedic call be added and assigned to grade 11. So those are the three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 12 articles that would be on the consent calendar. That is up for discussion for the board right now.
Are all, are all of these articles that both the select board and the finance committee either voted to approve or said no financial impact on?
Madam Town Manager?
These, yes, there is concurrence on all of these articles.
Okay.
I mean, there's no dissenting votes on any of these. This would also, this list would be forwarded to the finance committee, so making sure that we, you know, both boards agree on the consent calendar going into town meeting.
So will this come up for discussion next week or not next week, but at the end of the month?
By the finance committee, it would be, I assume at their next available meeting, that they're, it's on the agenda.
It's, yeah, it's not my intention that we would vote on this tonight. We'll let, let, now this is out in the public and let the finance committee have a look at it too. So, yeah, we'd bring it up on April 26th meeting.
Can we add any articles to the consent calendar?
It's up for discussion, yeah.
I mean, one of the things I think we could add is Article 17 for the cemeteries.
Yeah.
The sale of cemetery lots.
I think so too.
So, there you go. Adding cemetery lights. Any other discussion about what's on here or what should be on here?
No.
I'm, I'm fine with the list.
I'll add Article 17 to that and forward the list to the finance committee.
Sounds good. Okay, next item, foreclosed properties requested by Conservation Commission, Brayburn Circle, 867 Rear of Lemmonster Road and 408 Lancaster Avenue. So these were recently finalized in their foreclosures, is that correct?
They were foreclosed and the one-year redemption period has passed on all three parcels.
So we now own them?
Correct.
And the Conservation Commission has in the past and, and then by vote, again reaffirmed their request per the chair through an email to you, Madam Town Manager, that the commission reaffirmed their request for all of those properties to be transferred to the care and control of the Conservation Commission. All of them are abutting existing Conservation Commission properties, is that correct?
I believe that's how they were identified as parcels.
I know 408 Lancaster Ave is, because that's, I think, abuts the Woodruff property. Any discussion about this?
I just want to say when it comes to transferring property to Conservation Commission, I always like to hear what Mr. Dwyer and Mr. Jeffries have to say before.
You know, looking at the, the plans that are on our Google Drive, I couldn't tell if these were, were completely landlocked or not.
408 definitely is, yes. That I know.
If they're landlocked, I, I tend to be in favor of it, but i- if they're not landlocked and there may be a, you know, possible town use beyond the Conservation Commission, you know, once, once they're under the control, that's it. They're under the control. So I, I'd like to answer that question first before we decide on all of them.
Okay.
And I, I'm of the same mindset, Mr. Dwyer. I'm, I'm a no to all of them, but it's not because I don't support them going into conservation ever. It's that, you know, I think that in town, we have the open space committee, which does a really good job of seeking out opportunities to improve the open space around the town. I think the Conservation Commission has been doing a better job of identifying opportunities for additional conservation property and also the maintenance of their property. But on our side, I mean, I think that on the town side, I think there's a need for improvement. And, and I'm, as a selectman, I, I say I'm responsible for that, that I'm certainly partially responsible for that. And I, and what I mean by that is that we don't have a process or we haven't began a process by which we're looking at some of this property that either we're foreclosing upon or that exists or that we currently own and kind of identifying a strategic plan for future use and saying, hey, at some point we're going to need a school, you know, and we have parcel and, you know, we're, we're running out of land in the Whalum area. So, you know, we want, if we want to maintain a good look, we got to make sure that some of this land is. But land can also be used for 100 years in a conservation purpose that is owned by the town. If it's something that we don't need to develop for 100 years from now or that we can't even see the development plan in the future, but that it's a potential that it could be coming one day. You know, if, if we fast forward 200 years and assume that everything's going to be going, we're going to need more fire departments around town and we need land for that. So right now is probably the best time for us on the town side to kind of do what open space is doing and kind of being methodical about some of these properties. So I would just, I would want to hold off on making a decision on these three until we do that process, identify, hey, could these be used in that other purpose? Because can we achieve the same means of preserving land and, and keeping it for people to use for the rest of our natural lifetimes? Yes, but there may be a way to do that without putting in conservation.
I kind of thought that would be where you'd go.
It's like a broken record.
So it looks like we want more information.
Yeah, and it sounds like you've identified a goal for the board for next year.
We've identified what?
A goal.
A goal.
Well, if I'm looking at Brayburn Circle and 867, which are abutting properties, if I'm looking at that map, it looks like it's all wetlands. So unless we're going to be filling in wetlands to build fire departments or schools, but I guess, you know, we can find out. It would probably be good to invite the Conservation Commission and ask them why they believe they should be brought over to their control.
Mr. Pease is just signing on, so I think he can answer that tonight.
Perfect timing, Mr. Pease.
All right.
Did you hear much of the discussion already?
I heard the beginning of the discussion and then I came downstairs, so I missed the end of Mr. Jeffries' remarks while I was trying to join Zoom. I, I would just, and I'm sorry, I apologize for missing the end of Mr. Jeffries' remarks.
Well, the first, let me ask you a very direct question first because Mr. Dwyer's question is a very simple one, which is are all these properties landlocked?
Well, yes. There's a, there's the property that abuts the Woodruff property, that's completely landlocked. And then there's the, the other two properties have very different addresses, but there are two pieces of swampland that adjoins that pond whose name I'm having a senior moment on, that's down by Stillman Farm.
Massapog?
No, Winusick or something. Menusick? No. Guy's always posting, posting pictures under his name on Facebook.
Dale Martin, yeah, but that's, that's the Massapog Pond, isn't it?
Mass, I'm sorry, yes. You're absolutely, see what I, what I, is that about senior moments? Yes, that's the right meaning, Massapog. So they're, they're pieces of swampland that you can't get to and they have no road frontage. And so they're of no use to anyone except for birds and wildlife.
So Mr. Jeffries, if you would, that, that was a simple question from Mr. Dwyer, if you would repeat what you said, so maybe Mr. Pease can address your concerns?
I, I don't know if Mr. Pease can, because that was a comment really for us, but.
Oh, okay.
The comment, Mr. Pease, was that on our side, that the town, I wouldn't say our side being that we're the town, but on the select board's side, that we haven't been methodical about looking at town-owned properties and identifying future disposition for them. And that, you know, while I believe that open space and conservation to a, a level has done well in identifying parcels that would serve conservation purposes well, then I think that before we commit more property into conservation, that we should be doing that analysis ourselves first. And in the meantime, you know, there's no ultimate change in the use of the property. It still gets to be used by the birds and, and the bees, but I think we get to kind of start a process by which we're looking at all town-owned property in ourselves, saying, hey, we don't really need this, we don't really need that, or this is a good piece to preserve for such and such reasons, or hey, maybe if we had one more parcel over here, then we could use this for a different purpose. I think that we need to replicate what you guys have been doing so that way we can have an informed opinion about the disposition of town property. I didn't say those exact words, but that was a gist of what I was saying.
And if I, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure, Mr. Pease.
I think that's a great idea, but I, I would just comment to you, Mr. Jeffries, that most of these foreclosed properties are properties of low value. They're not, the reason they're foreclosed is somebody doesn't feel like it's worth their time or resources to pay the taxes on them. You know, a lot of them are small properties, a lot of them are landlocked, and a lot of them will never be of any value to the town for any use other than either passive recreation or, you know, conservation purposes. But I, I applaud your, your, you know, thought that it would be good if the selectmen were to look at every foreclosed parcel and see, you know, was there something we should be using that for?
If I can make a response, you know, one of the challenges, one of the challenges that I have is I am colorblind. And so, you know, I've, we have a good map of the entire town and all the property owned by the town and I can't see the difference. So that map is useless to me. And so it's hard for me with the tools that I currently have to be able to kind of look at a map of Lunenburg and identify which pieces of property are just town-owned, non-conservation properties. I, I, I know that it's something that I believe the town manager and Mr. Bernie are working on. It's a little bit more of an evolved thing, so it's been a, you know, do out for a little bit. But once we get that information, then I can be more informed about, you know, how to move forward, you know? So thank you for understanding where I'm coming from. And, and in fact, Mr. Mr. Pease, the thought actually came from you about, you know, the fact that we need as a town to, you know, kind of like all my complaints about conservation, that we need to do the same thing ourselves, that we need to be looking at the status of our existing properties. Are any of them polluted? That, you know, we shouldn't be finding this stuff out at a town meeting from residents. And I, you know, and I think that we have to be a little more proactive, but you know, there's only so much we can do, there's only so much time in the day and this, and this just hasn't been as high enough of a priority, but I hope that we can be better.
Mr. Pease?
As I recall, my comment to you was not about that. My comment to you was about the town present, the selectmen presently have under their current control, three major parcels, Pleasant Street, the Woodruff property and the West Street property. And the town does not have, the board of selectmen does not have any rules, guidelines or anything else for those properties. So right now, there's no rules against hunting on those properties, there's no rules against possession of firearms, there's no rules against the use of ATVs. I'm sorry, there is a rule, there's a bylaw against, against, against the, the hunting. I apologize for that. So, but, you know, or any of the other, you know, things that the Conservation Commission has worked, you know, to promulgate, you know, for the conservation properties. That's where I think, if the board of selectmen is going to hang on to those properties, I, I think that they should be looking into, you know, thinking about what, what are the allowed uses? Who's doing the farming on those properties right now? Two of those properties are in agriculture, someone's farming them, you know, who's farming them, you know, is there a license agreement, you know, stuff like that.
Do you happen to know, Mr. Pease, if the 408 Lancaster Avenue property, that the Catacuna mug runs through that one?
No, it does not. The Catacuna mug runs through the Woodruff farther away. There's a feeder to the Catacuna mug, but it's not the actual Catacuna mug brook itself, which runs underneath, which arises up on Mass Ave and crosses underneath Lemmonster Road, sort of a little farther, farther down from West Street and then runs down through there. And it runs right underneath, you know, where that land, that, well, that disposal site is, you know, that the town is in the process of mediating.
Right. Well, that, yeah, that, that's the Woodruff, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, this, that property, 408, abuts my property. I just didn't know how far down it went. I know exactly where the Cuna mug, Catacuna mug goes. I just was wondering if it was, because if it did, that means we'd have three wetlands. I mean, two of them, as you admittedly, are swamplands and I don't know what we're going to hold on to these four and, and anticipate. And the one on 408 Lancaster Avenue is, is a quarter of a mile or three eighths of a mile off the road in the middle of nothing. There's just all houses and properties around it that has no access. So I, I just don't know what the board is going to, you know. I'm more than happy to listen to the, you know, the majority of the board if they want to sit on it, but I don't know what we're sitting on it for.
As we sat here, Mr. Chair, I reviewed the aerial maps of, of these properties and the two that are by Massapog Pond essentially are protecting, I mean, they're, they're, they're swamped. So it's, you know, protecting wetlands and then again, the one by the tributary to the Catacuna mug, 408 Lancaster, I don't think there's any, anything really there to develop based on their proximity to those water bodies. And, you know, I, based on that review, I don't have any problem transferring these to the Conservation Commission.
So what is the pleasure of the board? Do you want to vote on these tonight or do you, are you waiting for something else? Or are we, are we waiting for another week that, for more information or are we just not going to vote on these at all?
I'm, I'm more than happy to take a vote tonight to transfer these based, based on what I've been able to determine from this discussion.
Will you make that a motion?
I will. I'll make an emotion to transfer, transfer the properties at 408 Lancaster, at Brayburn Circle and at 867 Lemmonster Road to the care and of the Conservation Commission, care and control of the Conservation Commission.
I have a second.
I'll second it pending an answer to this, well, no, I'll second it and then we'll have discussion. All right. So I'll second it for the purposes of discussion. So we know the acreage, because it's shown for 408 Lancaster. What are the acreages for 867 Lemmonster and Brayburn Circle?
Do you have those acreages, Mr. Pease? Of the two, of the two properties off Massapog, the two that are, are abutting properties, Brayburn Circle and the 867 Lemmonster Road Rear?
I, I do not, but I'm sure if you were to go to the assessor's website, that that data is right there, is there for every parcel.
If we go to where? I'm sorry.
The assessor's website.
Assessor's website.
G I I, G I S.
Yes. Okay. Is that something we want to do in real time or?
Apparently we don't know all of this in real time.
I think I'd want to know those acreages, just, just, just to know them, to know, have full information before voting on those two anyway.
I'll offer a comment. I think that it's important to have, I already mentioned what I think we need to do in terms of town property, but on the other side of that, I think it's also important to keep property on the tax rolls and keep people paying for it. I mean, if, if we're, if the opinion is tonight that this, that these properties are undevelopable and that there's nothing that can happen on them besides swamp, they're always going to be swamp. If a neighbor wants to buy it and pay taxes on it, then why not pursue that option first? If a neighbor wants to buy it and pay taxes on it, then why not pursue that option first? This is why we need to have a methodical approach to all of town property to figure out what the future disposition is. And I don't think we should be shooting from the hip tonight, because we have a request in front of us.
My answer to that, Mr. Jeffries, is if we know that these aren't developable, but someone, uh, buys that property at a future date, what tends to happen is when people possess properties, then they tend to do things that are, um, against the, the Wellland Protection Act, and tend to disturb those properties in, in ways that we've seen, whether it's, you know, um, build structures, or sheds, or place things out, out where they shouldn't be. And by doing this, that we prevent that at little cost to the town, no cost to the town, in fact.
All right, for the sake of time, would you rescind that motion and second? And we'll come back to this next, next week, and we'll get those...
Sure.
We'll get land values, and we'll get offers, and we'll get neighbors seeing if they want to put down money on these plant, and we'll get all of that, so we can have this discussion.
Sure.
Good. All right, thank you. Discussion on draft commemorative policy. Anybody interested in discussing this tonight?
The only comment I had on it was, um, as far as the plantings and expected life cycle, um, you know, trees or other plantings that were commemorative in nature will be considered at the end of their life cycle if the tree or planting has outgrown the original location due to size. Yeah, sure, that makes total sense. Uh, and interfering with a public safety, that makes sense. Or blank years, uh, whichever occurs first. Well, let's, I mean, I, I don't know how to go about defining this, but I'm just envisioning scenarios in which you have, um, you know, just arbitrarily assigning a number of years to that. Uh, it's going to really depend on the planting. I mean, you could have a, uh, a, a, a sugar maple or an oak tree that could last three to 400 years that is neither, uh, that has neither outgrown its, uh, original location or is, and is also not interfering, but, you know, if we put some, uh, arbitrary number, like 50 years on it or 75 years on it, then that opens it up to being removed just arbitrarily. Now, if we're okay with that, that's fine. I'm just pointing out, making the point that...
Yes, I think, I think it is there, because if the town would like to do something with where that commemorative tree is, 40, let's just say the commemorative time is 50 years. Then in 55 years, if the town would like to use that property for some other purpose, and there's some development in town, and it doesn't fit the first two criteria, we would not be able to remove it.
So the idea is to put a cap on the longevity of this protection? Yep, essentially, okay. I, I understood that.
Not, not that, oh, when it gets to be 50 years in one day, we have a bunch of people with chainsaws regardless of the point to just felling the tree.
No, no, I, I didn't, I didn't envision that being the case. I just, it, it makes sense. I, I wasn't coming in with an agenda on the item. I was coming in with a clarification and making a point. If the idea is to cap it for that purpose, it makes sense to me. It's just a question of coming up with that number.
Right.
Yes.
I think, uh, Mr. Chair, this is a good draft. Um, I think, you know, we've had several conversations, um, about, you know, this topic, and I think this is a good start.
Okay, well, we'll, if anybody had, at this point, if anybody has additions, deletions, modifications, please submit it in writing to the town manager, who will keep a track thing, so we can keep this moving. I don't want to dedicate a whole meeting to this by itself. I will, once town meeting is over, but before then, I just want to bring it up for readings. And the intention would be that, you know, once we get a meeting after town meeting is done, that we can really review this, you know, that we can sit down and hammer it out finally. But in the interim, please review it and submit your comments about it, so that we can all follow this along. Is that okay with everyone?
Yep.
Madam Town Manager, is that okay with you?
That sounds good.
Okay.
I do want to just add something to the previous discussion, um, regarding the conservation properties, just as a reminder that whatever the decision is, if it does involve transferring to conservation, it still requires a town meeting vote, so.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we have plenty of time anyway, is what you're saying?
Yes.
All right, discussion and vote on the, the public employee committee agreement, the P E C agreement that we all received an email about. That this was, would you like to introduce this, Madam Town Manager, please?
Yes, thank you. So, uh, the town, because we accepted a provision of this Mass General law, established a public employee committee that a representative from each of the bargaining units within the town and school are on, um, this committee, the P E C committee, Public Employee Committee, and, um, representative from retiree group. And so we enter into agreements every so many years. Our current agreement is expiring on June 30th. So, uh, we met with the public employee committee, myself, um, the assistant town manager, the payroll benefits coordinator, and we have a health insurance broker, uh, that we work with as well. And the changes that we're looking to make are, so this will be a three-year agreement, um, starting July 1st, 2022. And the agreement also establishes another, uh, plan, a, a blue select plan that, uh, just adds another option for employees that are eligible for health insurance. It's a, it's a smaller network of providers, but it's at a lower cost, so it just gives employees another option. And also modifies the Medicare Part B reimbursement to change it from a percentage to a flat dollar amount. And that, um, dollar amount, um, is, uh, they, uh, recommended the P E C committee ask for a flat dollar amount for consistency for retirees and people eligible for Medicare Part B. And this was the, um, agreed upon amount. And the last, uh, provision that we, is in the agreement, is that we would look at a opt-out plan for health insurance, so, um, but that's going to require a lot more research and establishing a policy, um, so that would come before the board, before any, that, that decision is made.
And opt-out for individuals?
Individuals, yes, that have health insurance. So typically, um, towns that have health insurance opt-out plans, you have to be on the town health insurance for, uh, a set amount of, usually it's a minimum of two years, so you don't have, you know, someone getting on the plan and getting off just to get the, um, benefit of opting out. Um, so it would be established a set amount that, um, if an employee opted out after a certain number of years, they would be eligible to receive that amount.
Okay. Uh, in the memorandum of agreement that you've put for us to sign, on the first page, it says that we should refer to Attachment A for benefit brochures, but Attachment A has, has just a page, so is this, are there actual printed brochures that go with this?
There will be, and it's really about all the health providers, just from, um, Maya.
So they're marketing pieces?
Yes.
Okay, all right, fine. And lastly, do you, what is the financial impact from these changes to the town? Do you, have you run that analysis?
The, we currently, um, the Medicare Part B reimbursement, we currently at the 60% because the rate is about $170. Uh, we pay about $102 per individual per month under this, so it will be a savings for the town.
And for the whole package, is it, that, that's the only savings? Everything else is pretty straightforward even?
Yes.
Okay.
With more people, if they do, um, change to the, the select plan, the blue select plan, it would be a savings for both town and employee as well, because the overall plan costs are less.
Gotcha. Any questions from the board about any of this?
No.
No.
I would entertain a motion regarding the vote on the public employee committee agreement as submitted to us by the town manager, effective July 1st, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
I'm assuming that means to approve?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I, you know, I read through this material. I am completely out of my element on this. So I don't think, I cannot be informed, and I'm fully deferring to the town manager's recommendation, uh, on this.
Okay. Any other discussion? Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, send it down for signature. Second page. Minutes, do we have minutes? We don't have any minutes. We have lots of warrants, so... School utilities, that's an interesting new warrant. We have a school utilities-only warrant in the amount of $24,731.71. Thank you. Uh, accounts payable in the amount of $587,303.64. Final pay to a school employee, $2,909.96. So you signed some of these already. You were here early at some, some point.
Yeah, I came in the week. This isn't me, no.
Oh, who's is that?
Not that one.
Oh, that's you, okay. Uh, payroll deductions in the amount of $610,246.36. And finally, payroll, $900,872.36. Now, while that's going down, do we have any action items from anybody on the board? Hearing none. Committee reports. Mr. Dwyer, any committee reports?
Have none.
Mr. Franco?
I, I attended the last school committee, but I don't really have anything to report from it.
Okay. Mr. Jeffries?
No, I do not.
And I do not either, except to say that the, the finance committee has their meeting, public hearing on the organizational change, um, as well as, I'm sure they'll review some things that they haven't voted on, if they haven't voted on everything. I'm not sure if they voted on everything on the town warrant. They are meeting 7 o'clock Thursday. We have moved our meeting schedule, so because of school vacation week next week, we are not meeting next week, and we will meet on the end of the month. That will give us the same number of meetings before town meeting and give us closer to town meetings, so that'll be good. Um, so April 26th, we'll be meeting, May 3rd, and then, of course, the town meeting on May 7th. Any public comment from the public? Mr. Passios?
Hey, Passios, 56 Whiting Street. I'd like to mention to the chair that I did move closer to the mic, so I would get here quicker this evening.
Thank you very much.
Um, you covered one of the things I was going to mention, that's the finance committee meeting this Thursday. Uh, also tomorrow evening, the Parks Commission will be meeting, and the final design for Marshall Park will be presented by WOLA during that meeting. Uh, that design was reviewed by the department heads yesterday morning, I believe it was. Uh, so they've done their complete review on it, and, uh, I've heard through the grapevine that, uh, it, it's, it's a good, uh, project or a good design. And, um, I think we can be proud of it. Now we just got to figure out how to fund it.
Excellent. And what, what time is it, and where is it?
7:00 PM, and it's on Zoom.
Only Zoom?
All remote.
Only Zoom, okay. At 7:00 PM? All right, so if you, anybody out there, look at the town website, lunenburgma.gov, go to the town calendar, and look it up, the agenda of the Parks Commission will have the Zoom ID.
Correct. And Green Communities is meeting, uh, as the town manager mentioned, Thursday at 5:30, uh, hopefully to finalize the projects for, uh, the grant round coming up.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other public comment from the public? I see no hands raised. Any public comment from the board?
Just an announcement that tomorrow, from 8:00 to 10:00, there's a pancake breakfast at the Eagle House Senior Center.
Thank you, Mr. Franco, for that. Yeah, I have, uh, public comments.
Sure.
So, you know, a lot of, I'm aware that many people watch our meetings, uh, either live, or they watch them on YouTube, um, afterwards, or on Facebook. So I, I want to, I try, I want to speak to the people at home for a moment and say, if you've watched their, our meetings, first of all, thank you, uh, for watching and staying informed. And the second thing is, please try to identify an opportunity for you to also, uh, if you're not currently on a board or committee, uh, for you to try to find an opportunity to get involved in the community. That, yes, knowledge is certainly a good step, but, you know, our community is made better through the acts of selfless volunteers. And so, you know, maybe being on a board isn't for you, um, but, you know, the cultural council that came before us tonight may be up your alley, um, or volunteering at the library, maybe volunteering at the senior center. Um, the schools always need some volunteers in some kind of capacity. You know, we also have AA meetings that happen here in town, and maybe there's just an opportunity, you know, once a week for you to make some coffee or something, uh, for a group of people that are in recovery. That, you know, anything that just, that helps you get out of your house and, and be a part of the community actively, I think is always a good thing. And I know many people say, yeah, I've did that, I've done it, it's over. You know, but service really is a lifelong thing. Sometimes it's not always pretty, you know, watching it from the other end, you know, but I have no doubt that all of us here are very passionate, that the people who volunteer in town are very passionate. So, you know, please try to find an opportunity for you to also, uh, get back in, in, to our direct community. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the board?
I did just have one other thing, because Mr. Jeffries made me think of it when he said about people watching after the fact, if you watch a meeting. Just a, just a general comment, I'm not referring to anything in, in particular, but if you want to, if you submit an email that you, uh, discussing a particular topic that was brought up during a meeting, if you could just put a, a sort of a time mark in, in, uh, in the meeting where that happened. For example, like in the discussion of a particular article or something, you know, just put where that was, 1 hour 44 minutes in, or whatever it is. That'd be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, having attended all the items on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I would hope not. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm going to abstain on this. I, uh, I'm in favor.
Good night, everyone, and, uh, take care of yourselves, take care of each other. We'll see you in two weeks. Thank you, and good night, good night, Madam Town Manager.